All right, it's 7:00 PM, July 5th, regular Busaras City Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Small call, please.
McKiever.
Here.
Myers here, Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
You have before you the minutes of the June 20th, 2023 Regular Council Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second that.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Busaras. At the June 20th, 2023 Council meeting, I discussed Resolution Number 218, 2021, which authorized the Service Safety Director to enter into a permanent agreement with the Busaras Bratwurst Festival, Inc., to provide necessary safety forces and cleaning services at no charge for the festival, and to give the festival a one-year advance notice of change to the agreement. On June 8th, I met with Mayor Reeser and requested a copy of the agreement. On June 9th, I emailed to the mayor's administrative assistant a public records request for a copy of the agreement. On June 20th and 28th, I sent emails to Ms. Patterson requesting the status of my request. On June 28th, I received an email reply from Ms. Patterson stating that she had, and I quote, "given this to the law director to sort through." As of today, I have not been provided a copy of the requested agreement. At this time, I wish to inquire if the interim law director has located a copy of the agreement.
No, the last thing that I have in the Bratwurst Festival file in the basement was 2015, and same on the computer, I don't have like an updated copy, so I'm not sure if they referenced an agreement and never actually put one together, or what the case is.
So, let's just say hypothetically, there is no signed agreement. What effect does that have? I just guess, what effect does that have? I mean, because the agreement has the verbiage that we need to give the Bratwurst Festival a one-year advance notice of change to the agreement. So if we have no signed agreement, then that one-year advanced notice is...
Well, you'd go back to the 15 agreement which we were referencing and try and construe it based upon what the language in the 15 agreement was, and if the agreement from 15 says that we have to give a one-year advance notice, the Bratwurst Festival is going to argue that that was always the deal, and we were just continuing the deal, and nobody ever modified the deal.
Well, I can tell you the 2015 never stated a one-year advance notice because I prepared all those agreements, and that was never in there.
I don't know, I just know that they were asking me for the 2021 one, and I don't have anything from that timeframe.
Okay, so what are we gonna do?
So, I guess you have a couple questions. A, does council want to change the agreement? And I can't speak for anybody on city council. B, can council legally change it without a one-year notice? That comes from the legislation, though, that talks about one-year advance notice, correct?
The legislation says that the Service Safety Director will enter into an agreement which will say...
Right, and we're not allowed to give, we have to give a one-year notice. So the Bratwurst Festival is going to...
I have a question. 2021, they were supposed to enter into an agreement. If no agreement was made, there is no changing with a year's notice because it never happened. Does the Bratwurst Festival happen to have an agreement? Do you know, Kevin?
I do not know. You have to ask the board of directors what I can ask.
So maybe that'll be the next step?
Well, that's, I mean, that's a one way to look at it, but it's also a significant contract language. Like, if we intended on putting it together and we didn't follow through, Bratwurst Festival is going to say, whoa, that was always the agreement because it didn't get written by the Service Safety Director, that's on you guys. This is a contract negotiation, a contract construction. It's not as simple as...
We need a copy of the so-called contract.
Right, and if there's not a contract, does the city then bear the burden of not performing that, and do we have to live up to our end of the bargain even though we can't? We don't have a written bargain because that's what we told the Bratwurst Festival, or that's what we put in legislation.
And the agreement, I would think, would have had both signatures of the Service Safety Director and of a Bratwurst representative, so yes, you could say we're at fault for not having prepared the agreement, but then you've also cut the Bratwurst Festival, and it's, why was there no inquiry on their part? Or where's the agreement for us to sign?
Right, but it also says that we're going to prepare the agreement in that legislation that you were referencing, right?
It says, "The Service Safety Director will..." "...authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement." It doesn't specifically state who's going to prepare the agreement, but, I mean, it's typically, when we've done legislation in the past and stated that, at least for when I worked for the law directors, our office prepared the agreement.
Right. Jeff, we're ready.
So Kevin, you're going to check and see if the Bratwurst...
Yeah, I can tell you, though, that there's nobody really on the board that was on the board at that time, so it's, that's the problem of volunteer organizations.
But I mean, don't you keep papers in a file?
I'm not on the board. I'm the director, I'm their employee. So I will inquire.
And again, when I came back and brought this up back on June 20th, the only reason I brought it up was, I know in the past, we've been asked by the mayor, if anybody has any ideas of how we can, you know, save on money, you know, because we're going into, you know, a financial problem here, that was just one of the things I thought of. I have no problem with the Bratwurst Festival, you know, whatsoever. I'm just trying to think down the road here, and I know mayor, and I probably won't get this verbiage correct, but you had indicated that there are other areas that you could quickly find, or $17,000. And you didn't outline any of those areas that you could find, this $17,000 that could be saved, so I just wondered if maybe, just for my information, if you could possibly make a list of where that could be, and...
I mean, they just passed an income tax levy, $850,000. So, it's not, you know, as critical as it was back in January, February, March.
I'm sorry. It's not as critical as it was then, since the income tax levy was just passed, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, do we have any communications or petitions?
Nothing, I haven't been provided.
Standing committee reports, Platte?
Nothing at this time. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there is. We do have a hearing next Tuesday, and it's on 403 West Warren, about the demolition of property, and the purchaser wants to put a parking lot, which is, gotta get a bearing.
Is that the BZA?
Yes, BZA. Other than that, that's all I have.
And what time is that?
4:00.
I'm sorry if you said it, thank you.
That's all right. 4:00.
Public lands and buildings?
I have nothing at this time.
Public, I'm sorry, health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report at this time.
Economic development?
No report, Madam President.
Service?
No report.
Traffic Commission?
Nothing to report.
All right, so may I have a motion to accept Platte's report? Some out.
Sorry.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, United President. I don't have a formal report, just wanted to, once again, thank the Kowans for what they did for the community. Their investment is probably one of the most important, one of the highest dollar investments from any civic or charitable organization, and so I don't think we, you know, really realize how important that was. Second only, I think, to Philbin Trust, this is a big, big, big deal, and it's been really busy out there and getting rave reviews. Everyone seems to like it. The splash pad is a, is a nice addition. Like I say, it's been a dream of ours for about seven years, and we had hoped to use the ARPA money, you know, for that, and then we kind of fell into some tough financial times with GE closing, and so Kowanas stepped up. So, once again, thank you publicly to all the Kowanus members. And anybody out there wants to contribute to the community, join one of these service clubs. Lions, we have, on the council tonight, we have a member of Lions Club, raise your hand, Terry. And we have a member of Kowanus, too, and we have a member of Rotary. Who would that be? This boy right here, raise your hand. So, all of you guys, if would like to be interested in joining any of these clubs, we certainly would love to hear from you, so. All right, thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director.
And here's Jeff's report, yeah.
You have a read it, okay.
Yeah, I can read it. I borrowed Brian's. Jeff wants to refer the 2023 Service Garage Stormwater Project to the respective committees. Second, he talked about the ribbon cutting, which was held Friday at Al Miller Park. East Mansfield Street from the Car Guys to TSC, the D2X contractors will have flaggers today, which is the 5th, and tomorrow, the 6th, and they'll be patching the street from the gas line work that's been done the last month or so. And we want to talk about the 450 Dudley House again, to see if we can get that thing on the fast track to being demolished, and referring that to, it might already be in these committees, but just to be on the safe side, let's refer them again, so we'll talk about Thursday night. We have Arcadis scheduled to come to the committee meeting on Thursday, July 20th, at 6:00 PM, to discuss US EPA consent decree, sewer plant upgrades, repairs, as well as sewer and stormwater separation. And finally, we're planning to start budget meetings in about six weeks, and our goal is then would be to meet with finance sometime in late October. If he has October here, I think, if we say late October, it's probably more realistic there, so. And that's Jeff's report for tonight.
Thank you. May I have a motion to refer the 2023 Service Garage Stormwater Project to Service and Finance?
Children's, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Young, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I also have a motion to refer the 450 Dudley Street to Health and Service, I'm sorry, Health and Safety and Finance?
Some, second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Potter, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gerner.
No, thank you. So currently, we have approximately $10,000 in the demolition portion of the property maintenance budget. 415 West Warren House, or West Warren Avenue is the house that's caught on fire at least twice, and will cost roughly $10,000 or a little bit more based upon whatever current prices are. I know when Rob was tearing down some houses, it looked like single-family houses were about $10,000. Also, as you guys know, 450 Dudley Street is a significant threat to the safety and well-being of residents in the area. The house is currently full of junk, which would actually have to be cleared out by a company that we hire or our own employees before the asbestos remediation can even be accomplished. The cost for the remediation was $26,000 a year ago. I don't know that that would have went up, but that bid price was subject to change after 30 or 90 days. And then, like I said, I assume that based upon historical costs, teardown would be approximately another $10,000. So the reason that Jeff Wagner and I have been talking about it is it's a blighted property, and it's only going to get worse, and if council wanted to work on that project, we would need to come up with probably $40,000. In addition, I mean, we could take 415 West Warren off, but, you know, that one needs torn down as well. Both 415 West Warren and 450 Dudley Street have been abandoned by the owners. The county isn't going to foreclose on the taxes anytime soon, it doesn't appear, and if they did foreclose, then they're going to sell it for pennies on the dollar, and the next end user, we don't exactly know what the next end user was. So procedurally, we have the right to go in, tear it down, assess the amount of our demolition on the tax bill, and we're going to recoup very little of that, so that's something that I think council needs to consider. I mean, I know both of those properties need to come down, and it's, I mean, probably going to be on the city, and we're not going to profit from them in any way. And we have talked to the EPA, we've talked to, they have Brownstone, Brownfield, different developments, which are mostly commercial stuff right now. The land bank and I have been talking and looking at different grants, but they have sort of committed their money to a couple of other projects, and they haven't been doing residential teardowns since the first go-around, when there was a bunch of money for those residential teardowns, but questions on that portion?
I've got a couple. Is there, do you have communications with the owner of 450 Dudley?
Both Betty and Kenneth Lacy are dead, passed away, and the taxes were being mailed to somewhere in Iberia, and they don't respond to my letters.
I asked that question so that we could pose that to the land bank one more time. If they've got, you know, an agreement in place with the, whoever's got the legal authority to grant that, then that might be something we can look at. My other question is, in the private sector, you don't need to do all the asbestos remediation the way we do in the public sector. Would the CIC be a workaround for that? That's a question maybe you can research and answer tomorrow.
Right, yeah, I'm not sure if they have the same rules. But, so then, we don't own either of those properties, though, as well.
Correct.
So what we're doing is basically knocking it down and placing a lien on it. We don't ever actually take ownership, so...
Well, and the same question would apply if you have the...
We could theoretically foreclose on back assessments, lawn mowing every year and those types of things.
If whomever has the legal authority on 450 Dudley would sign it over to us before we did it, then if the CIC is an option, that's one way to potentially do that, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure the taxes are $5,000 to $10,000, just in real estate taxes, plus all of our assessments, but...
My last question is, we talked about when Mr. Miller was in with his proposals, is that something that would work for that? I know typically he wants to renovate a property, but...
There is no money to be made on those, so no. The trick of the receivership would be if the property were salvageable, and you had somebody that could put $10,000, $15,000 in it, and then increase the property value and get it back, but these are, you know, past the point of being salvageable, and when him and I talked about the list, and these two were on the list, they were complete demolitions that they were not interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, sir.
And then, I know Ms. Deschawn asked about Dora and signage, and so since then, we, I have reached out to the Chamber Director, as well as Sarah Horell at the Partnership, and David Zach, and then I've also talked to Veronica Hildreth, who's at the Chamber, as well as Mr. Myers, and I have kicked this back and forth. So I think that between the Partnership, as well as the city and the Chamber, hopefully those are, we can come up with a plan to get those up post haste.
Madam President, I can address it. We found signs, we have some signs at the Partnership.
And we'll, so we'll get those up this week yet.
Those are the temporary signs?
Yeah. We'll get the temporary signs up and figure out what we're gonna do on a permanent basis then, so. It was, it turned out to be a situation where the two people that were the driving force in this, one at the Chamber and one at Partnership, no longer in those positions, and I think we kind of assumed that those organizations would kind of continue, and the new folks really didn't know anything about it, so. So anyway, we got it handled today, so we'll get them up. I'll pick up the signs from there tomorrow, and then we'll get them up by Friday, so. And then work on some permanent plan, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a question about those signs. Are they going to put them within the boundary versus across the street like they had them before?
Yeah, so they're...
If it ends here, why are we putting it across the street from where it's supposedly ending?
Right.
There was one in the yard at the Historical Society, even though it was the other side of the street where it was supposedly ending.
Yeah, it's all concrete, though, in that corner, isn't it? Like we're at the mother's offices, is it?
There's, there's a post, I mean, we could hang it on the post, I mean...
I think, I think the signs that they had had holders to stick in the ground, so...
Right, I mean, there's gotta be another way to...
We could, we could put them on the posts, yeah.
So, I was gonna say, I noticed that now...
That's a good point, yeah. So I know they all were, even on Popular Street, they were across the street.
They were across the street versus where they should have been, so people, you know...
So the street is not actually in the door, so.
Right.
Good point, that's a good point.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Gerner.
All right, everybody. So during a previous council meeting in June, Councilman Steve Young asked a great question about the revenue comparison to years prior to 2021, when we were averaging similar revenues to this current year. He had asked why there was a significant increase in revenues in 2021 and 2022, and if perhaps the city was simply leveling out this year. After doing some research, I had responded in an email, but wanted to address it so the public can better understand it as well. After speaking to the Assistant Income Tax Administrator, she explained that in those years, a few, but mostly one, of the larger companies in town made a large estimated payment. I'm unable to say which larger company it was, but I can say that we probably won't be getting any more payments from them. Estimated payments are often more than what would be owed, so the company will not pay income tax the next few years, but take a credit on it. Other times, they may ask for a return. The Assistant Income Tax Administrator gave a real-life example of how a different company made an estimated payment in 2015, took the credit for a couple years, and then asked for the remaining $70,000 back. Because of this, during budgeting, you want to be very careful about how you handle these estimated payments as revenue, minimizing their role in the budget in case the company asks for a refund. As far as comparisons for the month of June, we were down $11,985.53, or negative 3% compared to June of 2022. But for the year-to-date comparison of where we were this time last year, we were down $105,548.02, which is holding at negative 3%, so not bad news, neutral news. Regarding referrals, I would like to refer to Finance Committee appropriating $1,100 for wireless service to tablets used in the garbage trucks. The purchase of the tablets was budgeted for, but the providing of services to those tablets was not included. I would also like to refer to Finance Committee, the transfer of $5,000 from Fund 264 to reimburse the General Fund for its purchase of House 539 North Lane Street.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Lewis? May I have a motion to refer the wireless tablets to Finance?
I'll make a motion.
I'm second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to refer the transfer of Fund...
264.
Fund 264 for reimbursement to the General Fund?
Some out, sir.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKiever, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we don't have anything from the Treasurer Chief, Ostenheimer Chief Schwimley, so may I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports as presented?
Some out, sir.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Young, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on special committees and city officer reports? Seeing none, consideration of legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 27-2023 amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by the creation of a local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, 2023 subparagraph containing a general government category containing a contractual services line item and capital outlay line item and other uses line item, and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 28-2023 amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by appropriating from unappropriated local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, 2023 funds in the sum of $2,831,540 to the other uses line item and zero to the capital outlay line item and zero to the contractual services line item, with all line items being within the general government category, within the local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, 2023 subparagraph, and declaring an emergency.
Do I have a motion to accept this as the first reading?
Some.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Ms. Sherrick, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public participation of the legislation that's been read for the first time?
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Busaras. Ordinance number 27-2023. This being for the creation of a local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, 2023 subparagraph, category and light items, for placement of $2,831,540 to be received from the Crawford County Commissioners for three waterline projects, has been prepared as an emergency. It is my understanding and listening to the June 22nd, 2023 Service Committee audio recording, that the city will pay for each waterline project invoice upfront, forward invoice copies to the county commissioners, who will then have a check written the same month and sent to the city. Is my understanding correct?
Yes.
Kaylee? Okay.
As far as I understand.
The opening of bids for Stetson Road and State Route 602 waterline project is scheduled for July 20th, 2023. If this ordinance is passed as a non-emergency, the first reading will be held tonight, second reading held July 18th, and final reading held July 31st. Since it is safe to assume that an invoice will not be received before July 31st, I believe this legislation does not need to be an emergency. And also, I was looking at your Resolution 219, 2023, which was passed on June 22nd, and that was authorizing the Service Safety Director to accept this $2,831,540 from the county commissioners. Also, in that legislation, the auditor was directed to create the appropriate funds or funds from which payments for said projects shall be drawn, so I'm not sure why that appeared in there, because we have the creation legislation tonight. Ordinance number 28-2023, the caption in Section 1 of this ordinance states in part, "Appropriating from unappropriated local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, 2023 funds, the sum of $2,831,540 to the other uses line item, and zero dollars to the capital outlay line item, and zero dollars to the contractual services line item, with all the lines being within the general government category within the local fiscal recovery special revenue fund, 2023 subparagraph." Since you do not appropriate zero dollars, I'm suggesting that you remove the wording "and zero dollars to the capital outlay line item and zero dollars to the contractual services line item" with all line items. Section 1 also states in part, "to be used in, to be used to fund multiple projects within Crawford County." If you'll remember, council passed Resolution Number 219, 2023 on June 22nd, authorizing the Service Safety Director's acceptance of the money from the Crawford County Commissioners, and in that resolution, there is a... And in that resolution, there is a whereas that sets forth the three specific waterline projects and the specific dollar amounts to be utilized exclusively for each project. So I'm suggesting that we do the following with this ordinance, and that you remove the wording "to be used to fund multiple projects within Crawford County," and you insert the wording that appeared in Resolution Number 219, 2023, which was, or is, "to be utilized exclusively for: One, Stetson Road and State Route 602 Waterline Project, Sulfur Springs, Locust Grove Road Waterline Project, and three, Osceola, Lincoln Highway, and Crawford Windup County Line Road Project, Now, after having said that, I was discussing this today with Auditor Lewis. And do you want me, do you want to say what you said to me, Kaylee? Or do you want me to repeat what I think you've said to me?
So I was, they weren't sure if, when we were talking to the county commissioners, and it's possible I misunderstood. But they had said, if there was the potential that there was anything left over, possibly that money could go for a different area or something like that. So that's why I put "multiple" instead of the "specific" projects, because I wasn't sure if there was excess money, if we would be going toward that fourth project.
So I guess my only question to that is, and I understand what Kaylee's saying. My thought was the fact that it was specified in Resolution Number 219, the project name and the dollar amount, that we should do the same in the appropriation ordinance. You know, specify the project and the dollar amount, just to make sure that. Because if you look at the wording, "to be used to fund multiple projects," that's not consistent with what Resolution 219, 2023 states.
Can I ask, Kaylee?
Sure.
If we did what she's suggesting, and there was extra money left over, which wasn't specified, would we or would the commissioners have the duty to reappropriate it elsewhere?
I am not sure, honestly.
Either way, one of the two of us could do that, correct?
I would, I don't want to give you a certain answer on that.
My next question, probably.
The answer to that would be yes. If we, not to exceed X amount, because that's what we have, based upon our engineer's prediction that this is what it's going to cost. Then we're going to go out to bid, and bids could come in higher, bids could come in lower, and then we have to cover a different portion out of our own funds. But if they come in high, bids come in lower, then there would be X amount of dollars left over that we would then have to reappropriate.
Okay. My next question, maybe to the mayor, to you, and to the auditor. Is this something that we could pull from consideration tonight and let you guys all put your head together, since you said that first project's not going to come?
We want to get this button down.
I understand, but I'd like to have it done the right way, rather than.
Before we go out to bid. And I think it's important that we do that, do it as an emergency.
You do what as an emergency?
The ordinance, the one you're objecting to.
But why does that need to be an emergency?
Because we want to get all these agreements put together before they go out to bid in two weeks.
But this.
That should be pretty straightforward. You know, I don't know why, if we're ready to go, the commissioners need an agreement, we need the agreement. Let's get the agreement done.
Well, I'm not talking about the agreement. I'm talking about the legislation that deals with the creation.
Creating our fund.
Of the fund, the subparagraph, the category, and the line items, and then the legislation that deals with appropriating into that subparagraph.
There are also, it's not just, there are also bills that we have to pay that are started immediately. EPA fees, permit fees, that are not bid out. They're $5,000, $10,000. That I don't know if the county is reimbursing us for those or if we are paying those, but I know that those fees are coming due. Engineering fees are becoming due. I mean, yeah, we're hoping to have bids open so that we can start construction on that day. But there are legwork that has to be accomplished prior to that.
So those invoices that are coming in from engineering, they're going to be paid from?
The enterprise fund, the water fund.
So they're not going to be paid from this fund that we're talking about creating? So that doesn't justify your comment?
Okay, the way I see it, the county's giving us this money, basically, to do this work. And then before we have an agreement, which I think anyone would do, before you have an agreement, you want to know where that money's going to be, and that it's going to be in a fund that's going to be appropriated for what you want it for. So before the city and the county has an agreement, they would probably like to see that we have it in this fund waiting.
Well, don't you think you'd like to have an agreement signed before you go out to bid for the project?
We will.
No, you're not. Is there an agreement signed?
Brian, would we have the agreement?
Yeah, we have.
Is it signed?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the county and the, yeah.
So if the agreement is signed, I don't understand what the creation of the, why you feel that the creation of the subparagraph, et cetera, and the appropriating into need to be an emergency? Because if you do one, two, three readings, it's going to be effective as of July 30, or July 31?
Madam President, I would defer to our legal representative on his opinion, and then us, you know, rather than going on and on about opinions of whether you need, what Brian thinks.
We have an ordinance that states.
We should have to go with the emergency.
We would only have one reading after today, because we only meet on the 18.
And then you're meeting again on July 31, according to the calendar that I was provided. Did that change?
Why would we meet on July 31?
Because of a national night out? If you look at the calendar, and I got a copy of that from.
That is correct. We moved that to Monday night.
So there will be three readings as of July 31. You are not opening your bids until July 20. I can't believe between July 20 and July 31, you're going to have a contractor submit you an invoice.
Right. So I know, speaking with the county, and speaking with our engineer, and speaking with Jeff Wagner, who sort of heads up this project, this is how everybody said, "Let's get it done this way." But I guess it's counsel, however they want to do it. If they would like to not have three readings, go back, take things out, add things in, we can do that. We could schedule special meetings, like timeframes are fluid. But this is, in discussing this with the county and discussing this with our engineer, this is how everybody wanted it done.
So our ordinance, which I think if, this is familiar, you'll remember, one time before you became council president, you spoke at a council meeting and expressed your concerns over how we were passing legislation as an emergency when they did not need to be passed as an emergency. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
What is the benefit of three readings on this versus, you know, we've got this money, we've got this, it's a huge project. It's not a small deal. We've worked very hard on it. What is the advantage of waiting for another two meetings after this?
Well, I see where you're coming from, but I think if you look at it, the concerns that have been brought forth, had we not had this first reading, which we normally have a first reading, but if we turn around and run it as an emergency, then other mistakes could be missed. So in using your thought, what's the harm in holding off?
It's just, it's a huge project. We want to get it going, get it behind us.
I understand. Trust me, I understand it's a huge project. Because coming from the commissioner's side, where I have been.
Right.
I understand these huge projects.
And I know, once you made that comment that night, since you've been in that seat, you've never once objected to stuff coming up as emergencies.
Yes, I have.
Have you? Okay.
Yes, I have.
One time?
It's been more than once.
Okay. Okay. I guess I missed those, so. Subcouncil, you know, I just don't want to jeopardize this. It's very, very important, we're, these commissioners are. They don't have to be doing what they're doing. And so they did not have to do that, so.
Mr. Gert.
Yes. We could go as a first reading tonight, so that gives our law director time and Kaylee time to correct these problems, and then we can go as an emergency on the next meeting. We can go for the second and third reading then, if council agrees to do that. Generally, I feel this, when it's being a contract, we need to move on this. Yes, correct the errors. If we wait till the next meeting, I think that'd be sufficient time for it to be done, sent out to us, that we can look it over, and we can proceed at the next meeting and bring up any questions, if there's any discrepancies, and correct it then. That's my opinion.
I do have one question, since we are talking about this. Was the reason that the $0 for the contractual services and the $0 for the capital outlay mentioned as zero for the potential of possibly moving excess monies into those categories?
So the way, I was basing it off the way I made the fund for when we bought that house for FEMA. And at that point, Joyce had said, it's good to add in those extra lines just in case there are some, we shouldn't need them, but just in case maybe there were some contractor, something we had to pay out of that fund. It's unlikely, but just to have them in there.
So we don't have to come back and do this again?
So.
So if something would have to come out of one of those lines, if we didn't have it set up this way, the way you have it currently set up, we would have to come back and set up those lines again?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It saves us legislation costs.
All right. Anybody else? Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time?
Proposed Resolution 217-2023, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Bussaras, Ohio to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel for the 2023 Bussaras Browers Festival. According to the schedule set forth herein, further authorizing and directing the Chief of Police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, and local highways and roadways.
May I have a motion to accept this as a second reading? I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the second time. Seeing none, referring back to originating committee, proposed ordinance 27-2023, creation of local fiscal recovery, referred back to Finance. Proposed ordinance 28-2023 appropriations to local fiscal recoveries, referred back to Finance. Proposed Resolution 217-2023 Browers Festival Street Closures, referred back to Health and Safety. Committee on pending reported legislation, Finance?
Finance is favorable with proposed ordinance 27-23, the creation of the local fiscal recovery, and also favorable to proposed ordinance 28-2023 appropriations to the local fiscal recovery.
And Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed Resolution 217-2023, the street closures.
Further consideration of pending legislation, 27-2023? The creation of the local fiscal recovery fund for the second and third readings of proposed resolution, ordinance 27-2023. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Wireball?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 27-2023?
Second?
Is that Terry?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever. Wireball? I'm sorry.
Spiegel?
I apologize.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick? Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes.
Ordinance 27-2023 duly adopted. Ordinance 28-2023, we need to decide what we're doing there. What do you guys want to do?
Just ask for the motion.
All right. Do I have a motion for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 28-2023 to waive the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Wireball?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Potter?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 28, I'm sorry, 28-2023?
So moved. Second?
Spiegel.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers, yes. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 28-2023 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business? Any newer miscellaneous business?
Mr. Mayor, were you able to talk to the Chief of Police, somebody coming Thursday, to talk about, to discuss with us about the extra traffic that is not authorized beyond the street?
No, I don't know. I'm not sure that's, Neil was on vacation, and I was on vacation last week, so I will check and see.
I appreciate that.
Okay. It's Thursday, okay.
Anybody else? All right, we have the 2023 Service Garage Sewer Project, referred to Service and Finance, the 450 Dudley Street to Health and Safety and Finance, wireless tablets to Finance, and the Transfer Fund 264 Finance. Do we have any other referrals? I'll second that. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick. We are adjourned at?
7:47.
7:47.